Recording in progress. The City of Danone Special City Council Meeting, December 21st, 2022. It is now 5:32 PM. Would everyone please rise for the pleasure of the meeting? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As our custom is, is there anyone in the in attendance that would like to come up to the podium and give a short prayer or some kind words to council?
I expected... Let's pray again. Father, we're so thankful to be able to come tonight and just grateful, Father, for our city, the leadership this year. Father, we pray your blessings on them. Pray for wisdom and discernment. Father, we are special thankful for this time of year when we have the opportunity, Lord, just to celebrate the birth of your son, Jesus. Father, knowing that it's through his life, his death, his resurrection, Father, that we can have life or the lasting of your presence. And so thank you for that ultimate gift. Father, we pray tonight that everything that's done and said will be done in a way that brings you honor, Lord. Pray in your Son's name.
Ms. Odom, can we have a roll call?
Mayor White.
Present.
Vice Mayor Dunn.
Here.
Councilwoman Covage.
Present.
Councilwoman Nensky.
Present.
Councilwoman Mendota.
I'm here.
Vice Attorney Public Watch Manager.
Here.
Advanced Staff Finance Officer.
Here.
Georgina Safe Community Development Manager.
Here.
Lily Dadoski Records Court.
Here.
Michelle Leonard, Assistant Court.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Lieutenant Yalz.
Here.
City Attorney Patrick Rockins.
Here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall bulletin board on Wednesday, December 14th, 2022.
Thank you very much, Ms. Odom. I'd like to make a few comments, how we conduct our business here at the council meeting. First of all, council wants to extend a hearty welcome to having a packed house here to watch council inaction. From time to time, depending on the topics, we do have full houses. Our meetings are usually very well attended. We have these meetings every month, and we're very excited if you follow us, come participate and be part of the process. Couple things I would like to say to you is you will have opportunities to speak tonight. Speaking to council is a very, very important part of what we do. This is one way that you can speak to the entire council at one time rather than finding us individually and telling us your thought one at a time. You have an opportunity to say what you want to say in front of all of us, including all the heads of staff. It's an excellent opportunity for you to get your ideas out there. If you would like to speak, we do have in the lobby a sign up sheet. If you have signed up, you will be chosen in order to speak from that list. If you have not signed up, once those that have been given an opportunity, you still will have an opportunity to speak. I will ask if anyone in the audience wants to speak. If you raise your hand, you will be given opportunity. Last thing this council wants is anyone that wants to speak not having the opportunity to speak. If you do come up to speak, you will be given three minutes. There is a clock over on the right desk over there that you clearly see from the podium. You can see how much time you have. When you speak, you will be asked to give your name and address, and we ask that you speak directly in the microphone. Everything that you say is being recorded. It will become permanent city record, which means everything that you say is documented and can be retrieved by anyone who asks for that information. So think about what you say and how you say it because it becomes a permanent record. So with that said, I want to let you know that you are witnessing something quite historic here. This is actually the first full meeting that the new council that was currently elected or recently elected is all sitting here from the beginning of that. So you're actually seeing the start of a new council that was voted in for a four-year term. So with that said, we will first go, is there any council council comments on the agenda as it is posted and printed? Any comments by council? There are no comments? Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Jan, this is yours. Item number five. I was wondering if it would be okay with you to take this boat launch fee program and defer it to Jan. And the reason is...
This Jan's me.
Oh, oh, Jan's me.
Thanks for the compliment.
I'll get you, I'll get you. And the reason is, this Jan Covage raises a number of issues about personal watercraft. And I think that'll be part of this program and how it progresses.
And Councilmember Dunn. Really what is presented tonight is a draft ordinance. Just for your review, the contract with Safe Park will be on the January agenda. Attorney Hand and I have been working with Safe Park and he's worked on the ordinance. So it absolutely could be deferred. It would give you time to look at the ordinance, make your notes, make any comments that we could discuss in January because Attorney Hand had the same question about the personal...
Well, when I read this, it's on here, I read some little bit about personal watercraft, and I remembered what you discussed at the last meeting about it. To me, we just ought to roll this all into one thing and just do it all in Jan.
It's entirely up to you.
But that's how they're going to get it in that particular place because I don't know where else I can tell you. That weekend.
I'm not so sure how much discussion there would be with regard to the ordinance right now anyway. So it's entirely up to you all what you would like to do.
Vice Mayor, if I can speak to that, the draft ordinance as presented is just simply a warm-up to the game that's going to be played. It's getting it out there, telling us what the basic parts of the ordinance are, and there will be plenty of opportunities to modify and change it as we go. This is just the beginning of, okay, let's talk about this. There's no downside. So if you're okay with that, okay. One thing I would ask, I forgot to say this, is I, when I walked through the audience before the meeting, I was approached by three different people that asked council and staff to speak directly into the microphone because they have trouble hearing. So please keep that in mind. Let's speak up. All right. Is there any other comments from council on the agenda?
I just had one, number six, the goals and priorities. I'm just wondering if we could add a miscellaneous at the end because there were some things not captured that I would like to put out there. So if that's not a problem, we could just add a miscellaneous item to the list.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments on the agenda by council? Okay, here's the opportunity now for public comment. If you have signed up, you can speak. You can speak about any topic you would like to speak about. If it's on the agenda and there's no voting, you can speak to that. So Ms. Odom, is there anyone who has signed up who would address city council?
Pastor Randall.
Would you prefer I speak now or...
This is on non-agenda items.
Yeah, I'll wait.
Okay.
Anyone else signed up, Mandy?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to take this opportunity to just speak to council about any topic that you would like to bring to our attention? Okay, so no one on Zoom, Ms. Odom? We have all first. Yes, sir?
All right.
Oh, absolutely. Name and address, sir.
Yes, sir.
Please speak directly into the microphone.
Congratulations on your elections. I am Joseph Lugonis, Reptile, Property Owners and Business Owners, 12200 Southwest 114th Street Road, subdivision of... I would like to address our public utilities regarding cell communication system infrastructure, mobile cable and internet systems. Our cell phone reception is almost nonexistent in the area, but I would like to emphasize more so today, our cable internet service. The coronavirus pandemic has underscored how crucial broadband service is to the lives of Americans, especially when it comes to the internet. We find it extremely important for job hunting, work from home, and other purposes. We stay updated on information and news both locally and internationally. We rely mainly on our cable for our entertainment needs, whether watching movies, streaming videos, or playing online games with our friends. We also cannot deny the fact that cable internet also plays an essential part in educating the massive and spreading awareness. During the COVID pandemic, many children around the world, including high school, were able to accomplish their schooling requirements thanks to cable internet and the online educational system that went on overnight. It wasn't perfect, but they got the job done. Without doubt, cable has become a necessity in our lives and thus counts as a necessity for all the right reasons. Internet service is a necessity at a public utility. We have become accustomed to paying our monthly cable internet bills just like we pay our electricity or gas bills. I have spoken to some of my neighbors via Facebook groups and multiple posts regarding this very issue. Many of the comments posted addressed that their neighbors, other neighbors in the community, would love cable service, but they can't communicate because they don't have any service providers. The dish networks that are optional aren't worth the effort... Aren't worth the effort or the money due to the reliability of their service. I spoke with Comcast, and the best thing I've gotten was that there is a plan regarding in the area. This indicates that surveys were already completed in the area for such a service. No additional helpful information was provided. The undeniable fact that we continue to have an increase in people need to pay and our area is unquestionable. I implore that regardless of whom's jurisdiction... I implore that regardless of whom's jurisdiction, it may or may not be, we have the power to act and help with this plea to immediately, the cable internet is a necessity to so many now and many more in the near future. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? All right. Please note that those in attendance, those on Zoom, all have had an opportunity to speak. Ms. Odom, before we go further, I'd just like a clarification looking at the agenda. There are a couple voting items here on the agenda, for instance, item number three. And I don't see on the notations an opportunity for the person to speak.
The public input is taken during the quasi judicial hearing.
So it's not necessary at that time?
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate the clarification. Just want to get it right. Usually, council, when we get finished with public comment, if there's anything that was said that you would want to make comment on, we don't usually interrupt or ask questions unless they're significant. Is there anybody that wants to say a comment to what has been said before we move on to the next item?
I guess I'm interested, do we have a map or anything that shows what areas within the city limits have internet access and which areas do not? This gentleman mentioned rolling hills. I didn't know if there's any, not guessing the city, doesn't follow that kind of, okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment, please. I think it would be a good idea if we went to our Marion County Commissioners. I know there's current discussion about seeking grants from the federal government as rural community assistance grants to contribute somehow to our local communities to get these broadband programs moving in a better direction. And I also know that AT&amp;T is laying a cable right now down 484 into town. I don't know the specifics about that, but perhaps we could research where exactly people are going to tie in, what streets are going to go down, so.
Any other comments? I would just like to say that possibly the way we start investigating into this, and Lord, we all know, we've heard people outside the city complaining about their lack of internet ability, county issues outside the city, but we certainly could reach out to, I would start off reaching out with a meeting with Commissioner Kathy Bryant, who represents this area, and just see what she thinks about it and see if we can get her to pick up the cause and kind of push it with the county commissioners. I think that's the best way to start it, to just go in front of the entire body of county commissioners and broadside them with something that they're not expecting. Doesn't usually work well. So it usually works, you have a couple meetings, you kind of see where everybody's at, and then you make a presentation in front of the county commissioner. So I will take that upon myself sometime, as soon as I can get a schedule and talk to Commissioner Bryant. There's other things I need to talk to her about. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay, we are now moving to our regular agenda, which is item number one, the quasi judicial hearing. Ms. Odom?
All witnesses addressing the city council in these quasi judicial hearings will be asked to limit their comments to a specific subject being addressed. Witnesses should disclose any personal interest or relationship and any business, professional or financial interests with any individual group, project, or proposal regarding the subject matter under review. Witnesses should always err on the side of more public disclosure, not less, in order to provide integrity to the public process. Testimony will be limited to three minutes per witness unless the applicant, staff, or affected person request an extension of time. A request for extension of time will be considered by the council to assure all parties have a full and fair opportunity to participate without undue repetition and delay. Public input is valued by the council. However, in order to foster mutual respect, personal comments should not be directed toward council members or staff. Members of the public shall refrain from interrupting the speaker at the podium. At the conclusion of the hearings, the city council of the city of Danone will make a decision whether to approve the applicant's request. All witnesses will be sworn in and testify under oath. All persons presenting evidence will state their name and residence address for the record. All documentary evidence will be marked as an exhibit and maintained as part of the record if accepted by council. After each witness testifies, any council person may question the witness. The owner is entitled to cross-examine each witness after his or her testimony and shall do so by asking questions of the witness or can rebut the witness's testimony by presenting contrary testimony or documents after a witness testifies.
Thank you, Ms. Odom. It is now 5:50 PM, and I closed the regular meeting and opened this quasi judicial hearing to discuss site plan review, number SPL 2023-0040, site plan application, number PG 2023-0061, the First Baptist Church of Danone, Florida, Inc., Dr. Michael D. Wilburn, P.E., notification to the applicant and adjacent property owners at 12:06, 2022. At this time, will the city attorney now swear in any witnesses?
Yes, sir. For all those who intend to give testimony during this hearing, if you're able, please rise and raise your right hand. If you're not able to stand, you're welcome to remain seated, but please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth and the whole truth and that conduct to truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. May be seated.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brad. Okay, the next thing to do is disclosure of council of any contacts, ex parte communication, or other evidence gathered by decision-making body. I now hold each council member individually to allow each member to disclose site visits and written or verbal communication or information received in relation to this matter outside of this hearing. Any written communication must be submitted into the record. The city attorney will ask each council member disclosing ex parte communication if the communication will prejudice the member from considering the evidence presented during the hearing and making a bare and impartial decision. So individually, Ms. Covage, do you have anything to divulge?
None whatsoever.
Vice Mayor, nothing at all?
None.
I have nothing.
And I have none also. So at this time, we go to the presentation of the city report, and I believe that's Georgina.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Please speak loudly.
I will. So the applicant, Wilburn Construction, Inc., is seeking approval of the site development plan pursuant to land development regulations, Appendix A, zoning section 9.3-1, section 1614 for development plan approval criteria, and Article 9, section 9.1. This will be for a house of worship on the parcels 33653-001-00 and 33653-000-00, totaling 36.35 acres for First Baptist Church of Danone, Florida, Inc., whose officers are Pastor Russ Randall and Ms. DeRod Nolan. The subject property is located directly across from Gissy Warren Springs Ranch, whose address is 20985 West Highway 40. The parcels are currently zoned R1B, formerly known as R3A, and B3, and have a land use designation of high-density single-family residential and commercial. The parcels have an existing building which will be kept. Adjacent property characteristics were provided in the staff report to the planning board on December 5th and now to council. The applicant has submitted boundary, topography, and tree surveys, erosion control plans, site plans, site details, grading and drainage plans, both for north and south, utility plan, utility details, and a landscaping plan with revisions for review and approval. According to the revised landscaping plan submitted, there are three trees considered heritage and 20 within the protected tree list which will be removed. The applicant was advised that heritage trees have a minimum replacement size requirement of four inch calipers. Protected trees have a minimum replacement size requirement of two inch calipers and seven feet to eight feet in height, according to our code. Consideration by this council may be given to the applicant for the necessity to remove these trees based on essential great changes to be made. The applicant's contractor started the removal of trees, and a resident brought this to our attention, at which time we advised the applicant that they needed to stop and wait on council's approval to proceed. The removal of trees prior to council's approval of this site development plan will require certain processes to be followed in order to have the applicant comply with our code, and the applicant is fully aware of that and willing to comply. The applicant has provided a list of all trees removed, which can be provided on request, and he will answer any questions pertaining to the removal of the trees as you see fit during his presentation. The building official, the Marion County Fire Department, and our Public Works Department have all reviewed and approved the submission. A special exception was approved in 2020 to operate the house of worship at this location. As per the code, resolution RES 2020-27, RES 2020-28 were adopted by the Planning Commission, and recommendation was made to city council for approval at that time. City council adopted resolutions RES 2020-29 and resolution 2020-30, which approved the exception. The applicant has provided all pertinent documentation requested for this development plan review. As per the Code of Ordinances, staff review regarding the environmental assessment was found to be consistent with the city's code and standards as shown in the staff reports submitted to the Planning Commission and attached in today's agenda. The site data, impervious surface, building data, and parking specifics are consistent with the land development and city's Code of Ordinance standards. Staff finds that the proposed church site plan provides adequate ingress and egress to the property along with good traffic flow and turn movements, as well as first responder access in the event of an emergency. The applicant has planned sufficient retention on the property for management of drainage without impacting surrounding properties. The large nature of the site also permits for large areas of open space to remain, adding to the site's drainage function. The project area will be under the common control of First Baptist Church, with staff finding that this will create sufficient management of open space areas of the property. There is sufficient open space preserved on the property. Water and sewer lines exist to service the subject property, and FGUA will provide these services. Concrete and other impervious surface materials have been taken into account to protect the areas at the front. A very small portion of the outer band of the wellhead is on the southeast corner of the property and the 500 feet to 1,000 feet territory zone. This term is defined in our code, Rule Ordinance 2020-06. Based on Chapter 98 of the city's Code of Ordinance, the following uses are prohibited: landfills, solid waste disposal facilities, or sludge disposal sites, influence spray fields not meeting class relativity and not meeting high-level disinfection, expansion, this is all information directly from the code, expansion of existing high-risk regulated activities and new high-risk regulated activities, discharge to groundwater through man-made conduits except for OSTDS and storm water treatment facilities, mines and excavation sites, feedlots, or other concentrated animal waste storage or disposal, the use of drainage wells and storm water disposal, and the use of sinkholes for storm water disposal unless sufficient pre-treatment is provided and feasible, alternatives cannot be achieved. None of these uses have been identified within the information provided by the applicant. The number of proposed parking spaces is sufficient, and these areas are strategically located to sufficiently reduce their impact on surrounding properties to include eight handicap parking spaces. Lighting for a parking wheel has depicted be designated to shield light from impacting surrounding properties. All required landscaping and buffering of parking areas are in accordance with the city's land development regulations. The ball fields will not open for nighttime use, so there will be no additional lighting impacts. The retention areas will be surrounding the ball fields with there being over 100 feet of open area between ball fields and adjoining properties. Existing landscaping along the edges of the pro site will also be adhering to preservation in conjunction with all other buffering. Due to the size of the property and the opportunity for preservation of existing landscaping as additional buffering, adjoining properties will not be impacted by the size of the development or its uses. Due to the site... Due to the site size, remaining development and plant retention recharge capabilities and runoff increases should not be problematic. As a charge, use of the property will be reduced during the week. The most intense use of the properties will be on Sundays, which will bring activity when other uses in the area are closed. This development will add to the resources available in the community and will not depreciate property values. No historical buildings or districts are near the proposed site. As part of the review process, staff submitted pertinent public notices and applicant notice, posted property notice, and all other required public hearing notices. As per Florida statutes, Chapters 125 and 166, staff finds that the site plan to be consistent with the land development regulations, city's comprehensive plan, and city's Code of Ordinance. The Planning Commission has recommended via Resolution RES 202029 that council reviews and approves this site development plan as presented, and it is staff recommendation that city council adopts the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve the site development as presented. And that will be all of my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sid. Very thorough. Much appreciated. At this time, it's an opportunity for the property owner representative to make presentation to the council. Welcome, Pastor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Russ Randall, Pastor First Baptist Church, 20831 Powell Road, Dunellen. First off, I want to say thank you to having this special call meeting here tonight. We are grateful for your attention to this. Most of you are fairly new into the reading of all these things, and so I want to take just a moment or two and give somewhat of a timeline of what we have been a part of for close to 12 years now. Approximately 12 years ago, it was evident to us that our facilities probably were not going to be sufficient long-term. So we began this process of what, when, where, how, all those things. After two or three years of just research and discernment prey, determined that probably building a new building somewhere having a different facility was going to be the best long-term. We went through probably four to five different properties, each one for one reason or another falling through, not working, and finally came to this property here. And then, once we got to this property here, having no clue of the hurdles that we would have to accomplish and move through to get through there. So here's just an overview of some of those hurdles. In September of 2020, we find out that there's a wellhead buffer protection which basically took that 36 acres and rendered two-thirds of it completely useless in that you couldn't even put a playground with pine bark on it. So Ronnie, at that point in time, went through and offered some amendments to that. Georgina read to you some of those things that you cannot now do with that property. Yet, interestingly enough, under the old wellhead protection, all those things were possible. And so we believe that that was a good thing that happened in the midst of all of that. In November 2020, special exemption approval was given through our council and through our commission as well for the land use there, so we were grateful for that. We were able to actually purchase the property in December of 2020. March of '22, our first set of site plans were presented to the city council at that point in time. April, there was a digitally signed and sealed set of plans that we thought were going to be appropriate. There were a few minor changes that the city council had asked us to do and a few other things, but most of those went as approved there. In June of '22, a letter of services available was rendered to us by FGUA. In August, Swift Mud gave us approval to our plans. And then, October the 25th, we received a permit from the city of Dunellen. We brought a check to the city of Dunellen for $81,817. Now, that may not be a lot of money to y'all. That's a lot of money to us. We were treated in the same manner as a Lowe's or a Home Depot or some other retail. You have nothing in your bylaws or policies for those entities that are religious or nonprofit. So I just encourage you to consider that, and then maybe even render a rebate to us if that might work out. Here's what's interesting. We received a permit on the 25th, and we held that permit for almost 24 hours. And I received a phone call on the 25th saying that that permit had been rescinded. And to this day, I have received nothing but just a verbal request. I still have not received anything in writing, and I've asked our contractor, they've not either. So unless that was omitted somewhere, I just understand that. At that point in time, I was told it was because there was a slight error in that the site plans had not gone before the Planning Commission nor the city council. It had been before the city council. However, it was for the special exemption. And so we understand the mix-up on that, the confusion of that. Nonetheless, we were in agreement with that. It was scheduled to have those meetings in November. We were planning on that. And then we're told, whoop, we can't do it in November either because we failed to put the appropriate advertisement in the newspaper. And so thus, we're now having a special meeting in December. So the Planning Commission approved those plans on December the 5th, and now we're meeting here tonight. We have, and we've already admitted our guilt in this. We had a bit of a communication with one of the contractors. His job was to go out and just establish a sealed fence. As he got there, there were some places that he couldn't get to. He had the site plans. He didn't realize that they had not been approved. And so based on his site plans that he had, he started taking some trees down and stuff like that. Once we learned what was going on, we immediately went to him and said, no, no, you can't do that. I called Mandy and made her aware that we knew that we were not supposed to be doing that. So we acknowledged that. That was an error on our behalf, a miscommunication. So we're not trying to hide anything or trying to get away with anything on that. We just messed up on that, and so we acknowledge that. I am more than happy to answer any questions. Also, our engineer, Mike Wilburn, is here tonight too if there's any questions you'd like to ask him.
Any comments by council?
The other question I had is, the trees that were removed, are they actually within the building compound or around it?
It would be the entrance there. And these are trees that were going to have to be, that were shown to be removed on the site plan. It's just that the site plan had not been approved yet, so it was wrong of order on those things.
So to reprimand that, other trees are going to be planted at the entrance?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. You'll be quite pleased with the way it looks.
I'm sure. Thank you.
It'll be reinstated back to that. I promise you that.
Thank you.
We want it to look better than you want it to look. I promise you that. Thank you.
And the wildlife will be happy also.
I have never been able to measure the happiness of wildlife though.
Yeah, I just did have one question, and I'm just wondering, you know, I understand the history of the wellhead and the exception that was given in that. I'm wondering during the building process, during and after, if there's any concerns about intrusion of the wellhead and if there would be any mitigation measures needed either before building, during, or after with regards to that?
Nothing has come up with any of the concerns. We have met every question, concern that has been brought to us by the city in regards to the site plan. There's never been an issue with any of those things in regards to what the upper height might be affected, the wellhead area there. So there's nothing that I'm aware of.
I have one question for you, Pastor. Piggybacking off of what Julie just asked. So the construction equipment, trucks, and all that kind of stuff, they will be parked, you know, a lot of times they leave oil, fuel, that kind of thing. They will be parked outside of the wellhead designation area?
That's going to be difficult to define when you say outside the wellhead because the wellhead designation is circular.
Right.
And so most of where the construction will take place is going to be within that. And I forget what that actual first level linear footage is.
I thought it was 100 feet.
If you look at, are you familiar with the site?
Yes, sir.
So there's a driveway that runs up to that home now. Most of the construction is going to take place on the north side of that. That's where the building will be. There'll be some ball fields that'll be constructed, so there will be some heavy equipment in that area there. I would like to think that most of the equipment will be fewer. Of course, it may be like some of my stuff. It may leak oil. I don't know. We hope that's not the case.
Right, but the 100-foot exclusion zone, am I correct? We can't have leaking fuel. We can't have leaking oil.
We don't anticipate any of those things happening.
Nor did the Valdez, but I'm sorry.
I wish I could guarantee you that. Certainly, I cannot.
But I think it has to. But I think it has to be guaranteed, hence exclusion zone.
I have a map that shows exactly what the part of the parcel goes into that wellhead protected area, and it's not within the 100 feet. It's within the 500 feet, which is the outer area. And it's just the tip of the property that is within that area. And Mandy, if you can pull up that map, maybe that will clarify that concern.
This one?
Yes. So if you see the, if you see the property is where the dot is on the top?
Right.
Okay. And the 500 feet is just on that little corner there.
I'm with you.
You see?
And where the limitation is within that 500 feet?
It's what I read within my presentation, basically.
Pastor, I want this project to happen.
Yes, sir.
That is our well water. I mean, you know, I just want to make sure the bases are covered.
If there was a spill, there would certainly be mitigation on that. If there was a spill.
Right, and there's, from the prohibitions that are set within this area, it's just, they're talking about landfills, solid waste disposal, spray fields, expansion of existing high-risk regulated activities like high-risk, I mean, doesn't really give much information other than what it's.
I would probably say a greater concern perhaps might be the cars that park at the playground right there and then leak the oil. There's probably more oil leaks right there than there would be from anything that we did.
Okay. In the 100-foot exclusion zone, nothing will be in that zone parked or?
When you look at that, that 100 foot probably.
Oh, it's not even on your property. Yes, I'm with you. Got you.
It's on the right of way. That's why I wanted to have this ready.
Thank you.
It doesn't say anything about these.
Pastor, I just have a couple comments. As you know, I was on council when the wellhead issue was brought up, and council struggled very much with that. To get it on the record, to repeat, the reason council struggled so desperately with that concept is the particular well that you're building next to is currently the well that the city is drawing its water from. So that was very concerning, and council needed to have the assurance that our main water source is being protected. Another part of the conversation that was difficult was this wasn't an obiture to reduce the restriction on that wellhead. It was to reduce every wellhead within the city, both in the present and in the future. So this was a very big decision by that council to try to decide, not being scientists, not really understanding all it, to make a decision that is putting the current wellhead in a protection zone that's different, arguably maybe better, maybe not so good, just depending on what side of the argument you want to be. But more importantly, there's seven other wellheads that I understand that are identified for the future. All of those protection boundaries shrunk, wet back. It was very important for you and the congregation to remember that this was taken very, very serious. I've often said in my first two years on the council, this was maybe the vote that I struggled with the most. What made me vote for it is I was opposed to it because of what I've already said. What made me change my mind was FGUA coming out with a letter stating, they're the owners of all this now. We sold it all to them. And I insisted and asked, we need a letter from FGUA saying they're okay with it. If they're okay with it, then they put skin in the game. They have to answer if there's a mess up. So with that, you've got a unanimous vote for that. So I think that's an accurate revision of history. One last thing I want to say to you is, in jest, that we certainly have fumbled the ball a couple times on your process, and we admit it. But at the same time, you admitted you fumbled the ball with the trees, right?
Yes, sir.
So it does happen, right? So it's not.
So it was a head storm of a tide, didn't it?
So that's what I have to say. Anything else? Okay, very good. Thank you, Pastor. Okay, we move on now. The chair will ask by the public, is there anyone in the public that would like to give testimony or submit written evidence or through council representing any party with standing to support or oppose this subject of action? So anybody now that would like to come up and speak your piece to the council? Okay, with that said, we move on. It is time now, council, for a consideration of site plan. Close it? It is now 6:18, and I close the meeting and reopen the regular meeting and agenda. Okay, if those of you that are following with the regular agenda we are on now, number three. So council, there's a consideration of site plan, number SPL 20230040, and site plan application, number PZ 20230061, First Baptist Church of Dunellen, Florida. Do we have a motion to find that the plan is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, site plan?
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Sir.
Discussion? There is no discussion? Time for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Yep. On the next page. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we get the clap twice. Okay, here we go. Is this where the clarification is?
This is number three, the second motion that you're on right now.
Number three, the second motion?
Yes, number three, second.
Top of the page.
Okay, second motion. Proposed motion to move the site plan 20230040, number PZ 20230061, for the First Baptist Church of Dunellen, Florida, be approved. Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Quick discussion. After reviewing the application and the associated documents, it looks like all the legal requirements have been checked off and approved. And I wish you good luck in this endeavor.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We realize most of you have come for this, and this concludes that part of this. We're going to take. We're going to take a five-minute recess for those that want to leave, you can leave.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to restart the council meeting, it is now six twenty-eight, and we're starting off with agenda item number four, sunshine law, presentation by our attorney, Mr. Bracken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Uh, before I begin, how much time would you like me to throw on? Because I want to be respectful of your time. All right, I will do my best to give you the five, the ten-minute version. One thing for you, you all know it, but for members of the public to know it, I provided you with a packet. That packet has been provided to Mandy, it's a public record, which we'll talk about briefly. Anybody's entitled to it, there's some helpful information in there. There's, uh, helpful information about sunshine law, public records, and some examples, some of which we'll talk about. But, and congratulations to all of you on the new council and for our upcoming year of twenty twenty-three. My goal here today is to keep any of you from being indicted in twenty twenty-three for sunshine law violations. Now, if I have any job, that is my job, so this is part of it. Let me begin by telling you a, a true story, and there's a, an order in your packet that has to, that goes along with it. If there's any facts that I mistake, it's because my memory's bad, so I apologize to opposing council in this case if that happened. But in two thousand and eighteen, our firm was hired to represent three council members for the city of Satellite Beach. Let me tell you about these facts, and I can, I want to ask you whether or not you think there were sunshine violations. The city of Satellite Beach had what they believed to be an issue with water quality. And Erin Brockovich, you may have seen the movie, um, her firm and her attorneys were involved, and Satellite Beach is around Patrick's Air Force Base, and there were, appeared to be some significant correlations between cancer and the water quality. And so some studies were done, and it was a very hot topic. So the city noticed a public workshop where council would attend, the attorneys for Erin Brockovich and some specialists would attend, and members of the public. I don't know if it was the night before or the day of, uh, the city canceled the public meeting. And they held a closed-door staff meeting with, uh, Erin Brockovich's attorney, the experts, uh, members of staff, and one council member. Council member would rotate with two other council members throughout the meeting. As it turned out, many members of the public appeared because they thought it was a public meeting, but the notice was posted and it was canceled. And the police barred, uh, members of the public from attending the meeting. Uh, there was, uh, members of the public could see into the outer areas where the meeting was, and the council members who were not present inside the staff meeting, two of them, could be seen in the hallway, and they could be seen talking. No one could hear what they were saying. Uh, some of the members of the public ultimately, and then following that meeting, public meetings were held and decisions were made by the council about water quality issues, studies were passed, decisions were made. Uh, agreed, members of the public brought a sunshine law claim against the city and three members of the council who attended at various times that meeting. Offhand, and we were hired to defend the three council members. How many of you all think there was a sunshine violation there? Okay. One? Good. There was none, but it was close. So the defense was, for the sunshine law, it requires three things, it sounds very simple. To satisfy the sunshine law, all the meetings of a public board, a single public board, uh, must be open to the public, reasonable notice must be given, minutes of that meeting must be taken, and an opportunity for public comment, uh, must be provided. That clearly didn't happen here. But was it a meeting? That was the issue. And the answer ultimately was that no, it was not a meeting. Because only one member of the board attended the meeting, staff meetings happen all the time, they're not open meetings, they're not public meetings. One member of council sat in, there was no evidence, no allegations in the pleadings that the members of council spoke to each other about what was being said in the meeting. There was no allegation that any member of staff was going outside and talking to the members of council outside about what was being discussed inside. There was no allegation of what the two members standing in the corridor were talking about. And so we filed, we appeared, and we filed a motion to dismiss, saying that no discussion between two or more members of the same board is alleged about a matter which was clearly of public interest and would clearly come before the council. But none of that was alleged, so there was no sunshine violation. That complaint was filed in two thousand and eighteen, we filed a motion to dismiss, it ultimately prevailed, leave to amend was granted, they, they did their best to plead that a discussion had taken place. It was dismissed again, and then a third time it came. The argument they made the third time was the sunshine law statute does not require a discussion between two or more members of council, so there doesn't have to be. Their argument was purely being in the same room and listening to a matter of public concern constitutes a sunshine violation. And as someone who practices in that area all the time, we thought that was not a credible argument. But we went to a hearing on it, there was many months' delay for an order, we ultimately won, the case was dismissed with prejudice, it was in appeal to the Fifth District Court of Appeal. After about a year, the court did a, an affirmance without an opinion, so we were affirmed without opinion, or without a decision. And then the issue came back, and it's still currently on back, um, to the, to the city and to the court about attorney's fees. Because if you sue under the sunshine and your claim is frivolous, factually or legally, then the city can recoup its fees. If it's not, they can't. If you win, same goal, you get your attorney's fees and costs. That issue is pending, there was no finding of frivolous made by either of any of the courts. But, so where that leaves us in two thousand and twenty-two is one of the things that I want to convey to you that's most important. We were successful, there was no sunshine law violation. And I can tell you, because I saw the bills, it was a very expensive couple of years for the city. And so even if you don't commit a sunshine law violation, there's no there, there. It's the appearance, it's the fact that you might have to deal with it, and the fact that court actually had to look at whether or not a discussion had to take place. I can sit here today and tell you that a discussion between two or more of you outside of a public meeting does have to take place for there to be an actual violation. But it doesn't have to take place before you can get sued. It doesn't have to take place before the attorney general can investigate you. So my biggest, um, point of emphasis for you all, and today was a great illustration, I saw no sunshine violations, nothing like that, but you had two meetings, and then we had a meeting that there was a break. The sunshine, that public meeting takes place between the gavel. When that gavel sounds, and you adjourn, or you take a break, the public meeting stops. So when you get up from the dais at the end of today's meeting, and you talk about the first, if you were to talk about the First Baptist Church's plans, or maybe we should have done this, or maybe we should have done that, there is some possibility that could come back before you. You're talking about a matter of public business outside of a public meeting, even if you're still standing at the dais, if the meeting's over, you can't talk about it. And that is incredibly difficult for people that live in a community that cares about each other, you care about your neighbors, you see each other on a regular basis, it goes against everything we're taught about how to behave socially. But it's something that you have to do to protect yourself, even if it's highly annoying. It's not that you actually commit the violation. It's that somebody in the audience who's not happy with what happened thinks you did. And they can make the allegation, and of course, if you, if, you should know, an intentional, a knowing violation of the sunshine law is a second-degree misdemeanor, and people do go to jail. At the end of your, uh, packet is a news article, uh, from, I believe it's this year, maybe from twenty twenty-one, about, uh, three members of the Sebastian City Council, that's in Indian River County, I'm from Indian River County, I wish they'd hire me, they went, they, they went to jail for forty-five days, there was also some bribery charges. But, um, people do go to jail, it's not frequent, but there are investigations, I believe in that article you'll see, that a member of the attorney's general's office said, you know, we investigate these all the time, and I think I've had eleven cases, and they're usually very simple. It's the walk into the parking lot, casual conversation, but if the conversation does take place, it didn't do it knowingly, wasn't with intent, but it's still a violation. And in addition to the criminal penalties, you know, you can be removed from your office, there are civil penalties, there's a fine, um, and key for the city is any action you took, publicly took on that issue, for example, in Satellite Beach, if the court had found there was a sunshine violation, nobody goes to jail, it's civil. But every decision that board made after that on the water quality issue would have been void, because you can't make a decision in violation of the sunshine law. This also comes up very frequently in, uh, hiring. If you all want to hire, uh, whoever, a, a new director of so-and-so, and you want to put together a search committee, well, if you don't want, it should be a sunshine committee, first of all, but if you don't want it to be a sunshine committee, you just want them to sit there, bring in the applications, and then give you the applications, and make fact-finding. If they're in any way, shape, or form saying, these five applicants are the best, and these two don't make the cut, if they had any decision-making process at all, that's not a fact-finding organization, that's a decision one, and it has to comply with sunshine law, open meetings, minutes, all that stuff. But if, let's say you have one council member on a staff search committee for applicants for a new job, and then they come back, they don't have a recommendation, they just get the applications, that maybe they advertise it, they come back to you, and there's no discussion about which applicants scored the highest? Somebody in the audience is probably going to think there were some discussions that took place outside of a public meeting. So you can't rub, you can cure sunshine violations, but not by rubber stamps. You can't, if you had a, a meeting outside of the public, and you come in and you ratify it publicly, and you think that cures it, it doesn't. One of the other articles in your packet, um, is from another town where, I, I believe it was a hiring situation, but they, they, they took an action, it was a very minor violation, this, uh, city attorney tried to cure it, but the problem was, the cure was simply to hold a public meeting and take a vote, and they didn't do the tabulations at the meeting, they didn't discuss it, it was just essentially a rubber stamp. Um, those are the things to, to watch for in a garden. One of the things we're here for is to, we do represent the city, not any of you individually, but we're also here as a resource, use this for advice. And the thing that we say that I would point you to on the first page of the packet at the bottom, the best rule of thumb is when in doubt, don't. If you're all concerned, just don't leave wherever it is, don't engage, don't ask the question. Better to repair a relationship later because, uh, I was overly cautious than to get in a situation where you didn't even commit a violation, but somebody thinks you might have, and then you go through a lawsuit. You should win that lawsuit, but, uh, it would be better, uh, not to get in that situation in the first place. Public records, I, I want to touch on this a bit, I know I'm over the five minutes. Everything you do that's about public business, your email, your Gmail account, your Yahoo account, your AOL account, if that still exists, if you're sending it, and it's not your city of Dunellen, but it's about public business, if it's about Blue Run Park, or if it's about the wellheads, that's a public record, and it has to be maintained. Anybody can request them. If you're sending text messages, um, to a staff member, or you're sending a text message about public business, that too is a public record. Um, it, it should be maintained, um, shouldn't be destroyed, there are retention schedules to go along with it, um, it can be requested. So for example, if some member of the public comes in and requests all of Ms. Covage's text messages regarding Blue Run Park, um, from her cell phone, those would have to be produced. If you don't have them, fine, there's nothing to produce. One thing with public records, and this is more for staff than you guys, you don't have to create reports to explain public records, it's whether they exist or not, they exist, they have to be responded to promptly, and they have to be produced, so long as an exemption doesn't apply, and there are, uh, many, many exemptions in chapter one nineteen. But the one thing I also want to, uh, share with you is that the same penalties for a violation of public records law apply. There's a lot of public records litigation as well, but there's also second-degree misdemeanors for intentionally destroying a public record or intentionally not producing a public record. Uh, doing so negligently is subjects you to attorney's fees and costs and a fine. Um, but, but be aware of that, they both carry, uh, significant penalties, and that's one of the things that makes your job incredibly difficult, you're here to help people, you're here to advance the interests of your, uh, city, and these laws are also intended to create open government in a way that penalizes what might otherwise be considered good practice. I think I'm well over my five minutes, I've included three, oh, one other thing, I've included three attorney general opinions. The second one.
Mr. Bracken?
Yeah.
You're here for a purpose, no, you're here for a purpose, you need a few extra minutes.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
I mean, this, this is why you're here, right?
Well, one thing I want to commend the city for, uh, you do it really well. At your, the second attorney general opinion speaks to this issue. At your planning commission meetings, the agenda clearly states that members of council may appear and may speak. And, and they do regularly, and it's perfectly fine. Just like tonight, we have, uh, two members of the planning commission here, that's great, and they can speak if they want to, they can address you, they can talk about whatever they want to you, but they can't do, and they're not, they can't sit there and talk about planning commission business together. If they were talking about something and the other one disagreed with it, and then there was a back and forth, then you can have a problem. But it's perfectly appropriate, and the attorney general talks about noticing it in your agenda that other board members may appear and may speak, you do that already. But so I, I want to commend you on that, that's one of the things you do really well. I would simply advise you, if you have any questions, or if there's anything that you are unsure of when it comes to either of these, reach out anytime, it's, it's what we're here for. Uh, the, the packet provides bullet points, it provides reference to the statutes, there's some stuff on the Code of Ethics in here that I'm not going to cover, because this was supposed to be about sunshine, uh, it covers the penalties, the, it's good to, to have refreshers on these, there's new case law that comes out all the time, sunshine laws contained in the Florida Constitution, the Florida statutes, but also in case law. And we were able to win that case with the city of Satellite Beach, because the Florida Supreme Court had said in the seventies, there has to be a discussion between two members of council about a matter that may procedibly come before their court. Planners were right, the statute didn't require that. But it is what the Supreme Court has said it requires, and that's why it does. So with that, I would like to entertain your questions, if you have any.
All right, let's just start as we usually do, Ms. Covage?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Ms. Mendelka?
I do not have any questions at this time, thank you.
None for me either, thank you.
I just have a comment.
Sure.
One of the things I think you said that really carries a lot of water, it certainly is important whether you win or lose when you're accused of a sunshine violation, right?
Absolutely.
Right? But even if you win, you have this negative publicity, you'll be in the newspaper that you're being accused of it. Very good likelihood in a small city like this, your picture will be on the front page of the Riverland News that you're being accused.
Absolutely.
When it's all said and done, even if you win, the articles that were written about it will then be attached to your name. So when so, even though you win, when someone pulls up your name five years from now, they'll see where you were accused of that, so you'll find yourself having to explain this many years down the road.
Yes, sir, and one other thing to keep at note, depending on the way your charter's written, and the way your code's written, if you were accused of a sunshine law violation, uh, the city, as in Satellite Beach did, they were able to cover the expenses of the defense for the individual council members. City had its own, they're ably represented by their own attorney, and he represented the city. But we had to be brought in, because you can imagine there could be a conflict between the city's position and the individual council members, depending on what it was. If we were to have lost, then the city would have had the opportunity to say, sorry, you have to reimburse this for those legal expenses, which were quite high. So in addition to the, what sounds like a pretty paltry sum, a five-hundred-dollar fine you might get if, uh, the attorney general investigates you for it on the civil side, you might be saddled with the, uh, legal bills as well. But again, more, sunshine has more to do with perception, and what the public or someone who is aggrieved by a decision you make thinks or concludes by what he or she sees. who is aggrieved by a decision you make thinks or concludes by what he or she sees. Doesn't necessarily mean it's the truth. I mean, that was a long litigation, it's an expensive litigation. Things could have been done, but you know, sometimes things happen, and I believe that was a situation where things just happened. But certainly, it would have been better if the decision to make at a closed meeting hadn't happened. It was perfectly legal, but they also got to put the bill for getting a court to agree. That's one of the reasons we tend to be very cautious. It's not that we can't win, it's not that you did anything wrong, but just when, I think Andrew says this kind of repeatedly, that people can sue for anything, that's not necessarily always true, but so long as they can make a colorable claim, it doesn't mean it's frivolous. So just keep that in mind sometimes when we caution you about things, it's not because we think you're doing anything wrong, it's we're thinking down the road at the $100,000 billion we want to spend, and maybe it's just better if we do it this way.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I know this is a topic you could probably talk for a couple hours on. You do seminars on this.
We do.
Well, thank you. I would advise council, all of us, including myself, if you ever have any questions, reach out to our attorneys and hit direction. There's all kinds of, in our duties as council members, there's a landmine sitting there waiting for you to step on on many, many occasions. All right, we're moving to number five, the boat launch fee program. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you, you have the first draft of the ordinance establishing your launch fee program. We cannot enter into a contract with a vendor if that's the ultimate decision without having this program in place. So Andrew has just gone through, and it's a relatively very simple ordinance. It gives definitions, you can see his questions with respect to say, under Article 4, C for watercraft, that it may be removed because of what you all are undertaking. So this is just for your review and any comments you may have, and that can be either tonight, you can start on it, or take your time and review it for the next meeting. But you have time to look at this, to fine-tune it, to add anything, to remove anything that you deem necessary. But this allows for basically a broad program. It's not, you know, specific, and in my opinion, very limiting. I know he has one question, and this is under Section 46-104 on the third page, where it talks about the revenue that's generated will be restricted for projects relating to boating. That is correct. The funds will go into an established reserve, which hasn't been established yet, and will be restricted and earmarked for use based on budgetary needs or any emergency need that might come up.
Is that it? Ms. Covage?
I've been in the ordinance, and at this time, I don't see any problems with it.
I have nothing.
Nothing.
I just have a couple questions, a couple comments. On the first page, Section 46-101 Alpha, launch fees are the daily or annual fee charged for the launching of the watercraft, and then it goes to the word, I believe the word "at" should probably be inserted before the word "the." Sorry, the...
I'm sorry, where, where? Watercraft "at" this, oh, I see where you're talking about, okay.
In, on B Bravo, the permit is the annual permit. My question is, is that going to be a sticker, or would that be something to figure out during the workshop later?
In my opinion, yes. When you start establishing your fees and how you want to collect them, and you may decide that you won't have an annual permit, that it will strictly be a daily fee, that's all up for discussion.
So we'll figure that out later. And I got the same thing for 46-102, on the next page, Alpha, any person launching gives instill, shall pay the fee, blah, blah. So my question is, who, how, who will this be monitored and enforced after your workshop session?
Correct.
Okay. My next question is on the same section, Delta, launch fees may be waived for special events by resolution. What's the timeframe to do a resolution? And the reason I'm asking that, if somebody has an event they want to do and get a waiver, what kind of timeframe would they have to be worked backwards from to have their event?
That would be a provision in the resolution when you adopt the fees. You wouldn't have to pass another resolution to waive the fees, you would provide a provision in the resolution when you establish the fees to be able to grant a waiver.
Okay, that would be done at a council meeting, okay.
To maybe help with that, Mr. Inskey, we do something similar, like with the events we have in town where we make a special resolution to sell beer.
Yes, right. Okay, that makes sense. Back to the one you brought up, Jan, on the third page, I believe, Section 46-104, all revenue generated will go towards city projects and improvements related to boating. Is that purely Centennial Park, or are there other examples that that money could be used for?
The money needs to be earmarked for a park that has, that allows boating. So you could use it at Blue Run Park, since that allows, you know, for kayaks.
I see.
It is entirely up to council. I envision that through these fees, the utilities at the restrooms would be paid for, so your taxpayers aren't covering that, things like that. So it'd be not only capital improvements, it'd be operation and maintenance as well that would be identified.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Bye, Smear.
I'm good, Lou.
Jan, I would like to continue on with Councilman Inskey's question as it pertains to line number 117. This is a very important thing, these fees are being created to gather funds for purposes other than boating. We now know since we have severed our agreement with the state, we are now responsible for the paving, parking, ramps, dock. So I just, I would want to make sure, and the park itself may be putting playground equipment, so I would, you know, I always think we may pass something that we understand the intent now, but five years from now, when there's people, other people sitting here, and someone challenges this, they say, "No, this says boating, it doesn't say anything about putting it into the parking lot." So I, you know, I'm a little...
It could, it could be specified that the funds are used at parks that offer boating.
Well, something like that.
Recreation.
I think you understand, just to have boating right now, that's a wide-open reason to have a big debate on what these funds can be used for ten years down the line.
And maybe, maybe it's defined as watercraft recreation. So you have a paddleboard, you have kayak...
Mr. Bracken, this is kind of your neck of the woods, so you're supposed to figure out what we want to do and how to word it.
I've got a note here for Andrew, sorry.
So it really means these funds can be used at Ernie Mills, or any other little park we may have, like L.O. Robinson, I believe is it in front of Bot Springs, we could not use the funds for that. Just really at the two parks that offer watercraft recreation.
Right, and that, Ms. Smith, is one of the reasons why council, and me in particular, want to get this program going, because we no longer have the state taking care of anything. So we need to start bringing money in, so when things need to be fixed, we have the money to fix this, to this facility. So I'd be very disappointed if we go another year without having this in place. According to Troy, there's some things ongoing that need attention right now, right now. So that's all I have to say on that, thank you. Okay, we are, anything else on number five before we go to number six? City council goals and priorities. I just want to make a comment before we get started. This was one of the reasons this meeting was originally called by myself, a lot of these other things were attached since we were meeting. I felt that since this council is 60% different than it was just a couple weeks ago, that rather than everybody jump into the pool and swim in whatever direction you want to swim, we kind of get an idea of where we want to put our efforts, and come up with some goals that a year from now, we can say, "Okay, this was the list of things we wanted to do, what did we do?" You often hear from staff that there's not clarity between council meetings, what they're really supposed to be doing, and you know, we kind of want to make sure that in the 30 days between meetings, they know what it is. One more thing I wanted to say, it's an offshoot of the meeting we had previously, is how concepts and ideas become reality. There's various ways that a concept becomes reality. One of the ways is someone at the podium gave us an idea about something that needs to be done. Mr. Martian, right there, who's sitting in the office audience, he initiated some discussion by coming up and discussing how fast people were going in Nellin Heights. And from that, we now have discussion of lowering the speed limits. It also can come from staff recommending things. We had a recommendation to modify our computer system, what's that system called that we're going to?
Renegus.
Renegus?
Renegus.
That came from staff. So that was an idea that was presented to us, and we have it in motion. When something is brought up as a idea, rarely is there an expectation that it's to be voted on at the same night it's brought up. So just because something's brought up, it's a way of kick-starting. So the other night, just for clarity, when I brought up the concept of putting some shade in the park at Ernie Mills, that was to create something that I had witnessed when I went to Santa at Ernie Mills Park, that people had no shade, and many of them were actually huddling inside the van shell and whatever. So there was no attempt to try to get any decision, any approval, it was an opportunity to get a consensus if anybody agreed, and we would put that on a future workshop, council for discussion. And in the meantime, staff would make phone calls, make sure we're getting the best prices, discuss the different types of trees. All I did is I took it upon myself to give ideas, what I thought would work, and that's where that sat.
I'd like to take an opportunity to speak on that. I had, I had asked when we got to the, at the last meeting, when we got to the end of council comment, and the idea came up about the trees, I do remember your comment saying, "Well, this is how we get ideas started." And I agree with what you've said, that there's different ways to get things started. I think that my concern was that getting a consensus is one thing. I'd like to talk about trees at the next workshop, is that something everyone's interested in talking about? Versus when we get into the particulars of the type, and the size, and the price, and what it's going to take from the staff, and do we include the beautification? It's my feeling that some of the details are now presented at the end of a sometimes very long meeting, and these details now have unfortunately excluded the public because it's not presented at a time when public comment is an option. So I guess my, my thoughts about it would be that presenting an idea for consensus is something that I agree with, but when we're getting too far into the coordination of many different people and prices and thinking about the public, that that could really be a workshop agenda, and we could move through those things. But if I bring up, "I'd like to do something," and everyone is kind of cold about it, then I won't put it on the workshop agenda. So those are my feelings about that, because I have been thinking about that some, since the last meeting.
And that is the way to do it. That is the way, but I don't think it would be practical that every idea that you have is forwarded to a workshop, to have a discussion which we have had on various things, and then to say, "That's a good idea, let's put it on the next workshop." I don't see anything wrong with that. In council comments, we do have an agenda that we follow. You only have a limited amount of time when you can introduce new ideas. Where else would you introduce a new ideas other than council comments? And I don't take any responsibility that because something's deep in the agenda, people aren't here, and we shouldn't discuss it because people aren't here. We discuss business until we're done. So I know what you're saying, but I would not say, I would never take a position, "Well, no one's here, let's just postpone it." Our meetings are until they adjourn, and there's no one saying, "You have to leave, you can stay."
One final thought?
Yeah.
I don't want to dominate the conversation, but I also, I just think that if I have something that I'd like to do, and I'm, and I don't know, maybe there's feelings with the public or the staff, and, and I target it at my council comment at the end of the meeting, I just don't agree that that's fair across the board. I think it really extends the council comment at the end of a meeting. I think, I would hope that those council comments could be a little bit time-limited after we've sat here for quite some time. So I think that maybe as we go along, it can be like a fluid discussion that we continue to have if at the end of a meeting, we're getting in the weeds about, for example, the trees, what kind of trees, do you agree, how much should they cost, can you plant them, what if I deliver them myself? To me, some of those things are workshop items, and they're important enough that we're discussing them at a dedicated time where the public can be on it.
One of the things we could do is put the council comments at a different part of the agenda.
Many ideas, I appreciate you hearing me, thank you.
I'd like to comment on that also, following what Juliana just said, that I think if you present an idea and we put it on the agenda, what does that do? It gives us council members time to do research, and that is so important. And that's one, when I first started as a council member, I was totally, how shall I say this, inactive in doing enough to study something that was going to be on a workshop, and letting someone else take the lead and go on with something when I felt I should have said more, even if it just was something I said to slow down the process for discussion and public input.
I'm just trying to get my arms around this. So is, are you suggesting that if you have a new idea, you don't bring it up at a council meeting until you have put it on the upcoming workshop?
Exactly. Give us a heads up so we can do some...
It just doesn't work that way. Ideas come at a spur of the moment, you might have an idea right now.
I agree on that, I'm talking about...
You might have an idea right now, that's a good idea, Jan, because maybe put it on the next workshop.
And I think that's what's being said, it's just when we start getting into the details of that idea during the particular meeting, before it has been on an agenda is what the conversation is about.
I would hope that what I showed, what I was hoping, it would take the interest of council, and you say, "There's something to this, let's put it on the next agenda." That's how it always goes. Your idea about the watercraft, I don't remember that being on the agenda, was that on the agenda?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Certainly was.
But there, there's plenty of things. There's plenty of things that we do that are created. Anyway, the way it should be is if a good idea comes up, and we think it's a good idea, put it on the next workshop.
Yes.
I, I don't see where you don't come up with a good idea until you wait till the next month and you put it on the agenda. There's nothing hurting discussing a good idea. Anyway, that's my feeling. But I get, I get what you're saying. Okay, let's go to city council goals and priorities. The way this was structured wasn't exactly what I was hoping when I called this meeting. I thought this was going to be a scull session of generalities of where we wanted to put our time, effort, and what we thought we, as individuals, would maybe divvy up responsibilities of what our interests were. But this has shown up on the agenda kind of different than what I was expecting where it's been itemized. So well, since it's on the agenda, let's, let's go through it. The very first thing on it is the shade pavilions at City Beach.
Can I please ask as we, if we get into 10 or more of these, in our discussion, I guess I'm just hoping to communicate early on what will be the level of discussion. So will this be like, are we, are we looking at a couple of minutes on each issue to say, yes, I think we should move on with this, or no, that's really not a priority of mine right now? Or how many details will we be talking about in the interest of, of time? I'm just curious how that would be structured, because I was unclear how this discussion would roll out as well. So do you have any visions for it?
It would be a roundtable discussion of, okay, let's go over some of the objects and the goals and the things you would like to see done going forward. You might say, well, I want to focus on the abandoned homes and neglected businesses. You might say, I want to really emphasize going over the council plan. Councilman Insgood might want to say, I want to focus on procedures, how we go about making decisions.
That's helpful, because it's general, and if we would get into the weeds, it's great.
That was my purpose. A councilman Dunn might want to say, I want to understand and make sure we have a better accounting system that council understands, and I have suggestions on how it can be reported or to be understood. So that's what I, what I, what I was hoping we'd do, but we can handle this any way you want to handle it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Good. I'm the one to put the first four items on here, and they're not specifically for those four items. What I was trying to list out were just different things that the city does, or has looked at or thought about, that, you know, just seemed to appear. We decided we're going to go forward with it, and we go. And there doesn't seem to be a plan, you know, with me. And, excuse me, but my whole life was in the world of business, and you don't do anything without a plan. You don't, you've got to have, like you said, you've got to have goals, you've got to have a plan, and you've got to lay it out so everybody understands, not only the council, but the staff as well, so they understand the direction of which we want to go. And it seems to me that, and I'm not picking on anybody, and I don't want anybody to get offended about what I'm about to say, but it seems to me like the idea of waste signs came up, okay, we're going to throw some money at that, we're going to do that. All right, we got the solar lighting on West Pennsylvania, you know, put some money into that. We're building shade shelters at City Beach. The idea of going and putting trees at Ernie Mills Park, which came up at the last meeting, I totally agree with that. But what I'm trying to demonstrate in those four things is they're disjointed. There is no plan. They just kind of appear. And what I think we ought to do is, one, stop, and not do any of this until we have a plan so we understand as a group what we want to try to accomplish. And the reason I'm getting to that is you go down to the very last item, road problem. Because it was very clear to me when I was campaigning for this office, as I walked through this town, everybody wants our roads fixed, or they want paved roads of any kind, okay? And it seems that we get kind of distracted, and I don't mean that in a negative way. We just kind of come up with ideas, like we need to do waste signs, we need to do solar lights. And oh, by the way, when I was over there in the historic district, and I asked the people, did they want waste signs and did they want solar lights, I did not have one answer that said, yes. So to me, it's kind of like, why are we spending our efforts on this when the people who live here don't even want this? Okay? And again, I'm, I'm not trying to be rough or rough about this. This is just what I learned in campaign. It seems that we've got all these different things, and like I say, why you find, that's not be great. But if it's not what the citizens want, then why are we spending our time and money? If the solar lighting people don't want on Pennsylvania, then why are we spending our money on that? And on the shade shelter thing, it may be in a situation where I got a bad taste in my mouth when we built one, and it didn't really go well, but it was repaired and fixed. Then we enter into somewhat of a contract, somebody to build two more, and that contract basically blew up, and the guy that run all of the money. And now all of a sudden, we're in a panic to build two more, and the individual that we're talking with won't sign a contract. But when I heard that, I think that's the dumbest thing we could do, is enter into a deal with a builder who won't even sign a contract. So I think the whole shade pavilion thing just needs to stop. And again, put it in a priority of what does this council want to do, and what do the citizens want to do? And again, it comes back to whether you call it business plan or organizational plan, because we've got our staff running around on all of this, and it's like whoever calls today with a topic, well, that's what they could run around here and do. And to me, if we had a plan, we could say, okay, this is what we want to try to accomplish. Not that all of this won't get back on the plan, but they know, all right, this is what's the most important, this is what's next, this is what's next. And we've worked through this in the organizational map. And right now, it just seems like it's just all getting thrown on here. And again, you can go down to Main Street, that's a great idea, but it's kind of out there too. I just think we didn't get a hold of this. And what I would like to say, and my point of all this, and the things I wrote down, was to say, maybe in the month of January, we need to have, whether you call it a special meeting or a regular workshop, that we try to develop a plan of what this city really wants to try to accomplish. And then from that, go forward and say, all right, this is what we really think is important, this is the priorities we want to have, this is how we want to spend our money. And I always go back to the money, because the town doesn't have a lot of money. And these are all great ideas, but if we really want to spend our money on this, we would rather not put them in roads, or something the citizens really want. And that's where I came up with this. So, and that's, that was my thought, and why this whole book's so, so disjunct.
Any other comments?
I understand everything Wally said, and I agree with everything Wally said, but I guess what I thought we were also going to do tonight was, we got these line items, some of them may be a little more detailed than what this meeting was intended for, but at least get, hit each one of these, a highlight of what is behind each of these line items, and then carry that over to an agenda for a workshop, and prioritize those, and, and go from there.
Any other comments? The only thing I can say is there are a few things on this list that are finished business.
Yes.
They have been discussed, they have been voted on, money's been appropriated, and they're projects that are supposed to be ongoing. The Shade Pavilion project was actually initiated and approved when Dale Burns was mayor. It's also been approved again with me as mayor. So this, this has been something that has been discussed over two and a half years. It's actually one of my pet projects. It's one of the things that means a lot to me. I live near City Beach. I go there often. Again, people that attend City Beach with their kids and their families, whatever, there's absolutely no place to get out of the sun. There's absolutely no place to temporarily get out of the rain. The one pavilion that we did build, if you can ask Troy, he will verify that on any given nice day, there's, there's always someone sitting, sitting underneath it. I would let Troy speak to the proposal that we have with the contractor, in that it's my understanding, without knowing the vernacular of construction, that the way this is structured is that the city itself is the contractor. Is that not correct?
You know, we, that's one of the challenges we're having on this, because the contractors want us to do an owner-built permit, and that puts the city at 100% liable and responsible for anything and everything that occurs with this pavilion project, today, tomorrow, and forever. So without a contract, with, you know, holding a contract to a solid, firm price as to what the project's going to run, question one, we have a basic idea of what materials we're running, but there's additional costs that we could run into that we're not protected from in a verbal agreement. But with the permitting and an owner-built, there's a waiver and affidavit that the city will have to sign stating that they won't sell, lease, or allow others to, you know, charge others to be in for two years. So I'm not an attorney, and I'm, but my rough interpretation of this waiver, we'd have to eliminate any user fees at the City Beach, because we're technically leasing it out for the day or a period of time. And under that waiver, the city is responsible. We're, you know? So we're trying to run the permit, use the contractor's license, use licensed contractor and an insured contractor.
Troy, all I have to say to you is, what you say to me in private, I want to hear in public. What you're saying to me right now, you have never, and we have discussed this project 50 times.
Because we have discovered this portion of the project.
You have been behind this 100% and have encouraged it to go forward. You are right now saying something that's totally opposite what you have been talking to me about for months.
I disagree with that. I am not telling you anything opposite.
This would not have gotten to the point it had gotten to. If you had been saying what you were saying, that would have killed it.
Had I known it when we started the conversation, I would have said it, but I didn't.
I expect, I expect.
I didn't find out until just a couple of days, a week ago.
I am very disappointed, Troy. You have not been forthright with me.
I'd like to speak to the shade pavilions, if I may. I, this was the, one of the, this was the night that I joined the council, this was one of the votes. And I had done my work behind the scenes and voted no that night, because I felt that things went sideways with the shade pavilions when, first when we had the issues with the initial contractor, and when there was a delay in transparency with the public. For me, that was a no vote. If the public didn't know what had occurred behind the scenes, the shade shelters weren't an F priority for me to go forward without the public having knowledge of that. When we, the other big deal breaker for me is that when we start to, when we start to make arrangements with people and contract with people outside of the city's standard process for getting bids, for requiring things of people to do things in the city, when we start side dealing or saying, one night it was said that this is a great deal, why would we not want to do this? And I could think of a lot of reasons why, why I personally would not agree with that. So for me, we have a whole list of goals here, and we can check goals all day long, but without systems in place that we're consistently following, none of it will be successful. So if we want to do shade pavilions, I, I would, I would hope that this council could come to a consensus of it's something that we want to do or not, and go back to the systems of the city and follow every last system and checklist so that we're not, so that we're not doing something less than transparent with the public.
Just to add to your comments, Julian, in my experience is, once you get out of process, and there's a lot of reasons that you do root causes all the time on something when stuff goes wrong, and then there's a lot of reasons, or things that add up, that we're taking out of process, and you add up enough of them, and then we end up with, with a negative result. So to keep going with what Julian said, whatever we do, we need to stay within process. And what I'm hearing, the information that I got about the shade shelter is, we're so far out of process with what we're looking at doing right now, that there's just too many things that can go wrong. I'm not saying we don't build the shade shelters. I am saying that we prioritize where we want to spend staff's time and effort on this, but it must stay in process. My whole opinion on even $11,000 is, we got out of, what I'm saying is the logistical process of, of that particular contract. Thank goodness Kelly caught it, so we didn't go further down the road. But there are reasons why, you know, it's like time pressure, you know? Time pressure was always, is always a big one for somebody to get out of process. Many other things that happened, and there were a few of those that happened when I go through the root cause of the $11,000 that added up to, we lost $11,000, staff's spending a lot of time trying to improve it, we have attorney costs in it that, that we're spending, and we're still talking about it today. The other comment I have on all these topics is, I didn't think that we were going to argue, and I mean argue as the way legal folks argue back and forth, or debate or whatever, each one of these. For the sake of time, I thought we were just going to give a synopsis of what that particular issue is about, put it on a, prioritize them, put them on a, a workshop agenda per priority. Enough on the, not so many on the workshop agenda that we can't do each one, do due diligence for each one, and not just touch on it all, if any of that makes sense.
I totally agree. You know, it's not just the shade shelters. To me, I may have some bad information, but I won't repeat what I was told, you know, when you go to these solar lights. It's like we started looking for solar lights, we agreed we were going to do the solar lights, but then when we finally got them, they weren't the quality, they weren't bright enough, they were going to have to be stopped, redone. Or again, I come back to what you were just saying, is if we had really thought through the whole process, you know, was 100 balloons going to be bright enough, or should be 1,000 or, you know, was the quality of the poles and how it was done, was that the quality we really wanted? Again, going back to what you said, did we go through all the due diligence of each one of these before we got way down the road? We approved it, everybody agreed to it, that's cool, but then all of a sudden, you get down the road, and it's like, wait a minute.
Right.
We don't want this light, but this isn't that bright. Now we got to back up and figure out what light does. Well, to me, if we've done the right due diligence, it wasn't, it wasn't a bad idea, it's just we didn't have all the facts before we did so.
Right, and it's a perfect example of where the original lighting was going to be $26,000, and I don't quite remember the figure last time, Georgina, but I think they're up to $75,000 now.
Around there.
And to me, that's just one more. And to me, that's just one more example of we throw so much stuff out there. Staff only has so many resources and time to do it. So they can only do due diligence with so many items and do good due diligence. And these are just, to me, perfect examples that we push, 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 try to get without any big priorities. So I think, I thought that that's what the gist of this meeting was, was to, to help with all that and so we're not just having the staff spin their wheels and then, you know, and then sit here and...
Well, if I could make comment, world of education we came from, we have ideas, develop curriculum, get it approved and so on. We work with flow charts, step by step. And, you know, solar lighting, that sounds great, but through this whole conversation with the solar lights, there were so many loose ends, such as who's going to remove it, cost of installation, how's Duke Energy going to be involved with this? Just too many loose ends and then the cost escalated. I would, this is, I agree with you guys. You start at point A and you go to point B and every detail needs to be discussed and the public needs to be aware of what's going on and expenditure needs to be nailed down like, I would say, with some kind of promptness. It can't be bouncing around, pulling money out of our general fund or proposing we pull money out of our general fund for projects when we haven't done the homework. And if it means hiring consultants to get this done, then we should go that way also.
Jan, I'll speak to that just briefly because I think that there has been a lot of work from the staff in the past year. And, and we're all soon going to learn how to work together. And I do think that it's city council's responsibility to help the staff to know what they're, what we're expecting them to focus on. Because if we say, yeah, lights are a good idea and then we're, we're leaving it with just the staff or just one or two people to do all the light work, I think that it just becomes really unfair to the staff. So when I saw what community development was working on, I thought, wow, we really owe it to that department to say, hold on, these are the three things that we, as a council, would like you to focus on in tandem with what the community wants so that our department heads can be successful at what they're doing and that we all know at all times what everybody's working on and that we're not giving people extra jobs that are detracting from projects that they're already doing. So I, I hope out of this conversation that council becomes part of the solution to help staff be better focused.
If I may, one more. I want to make sure everybody understands my intent is not, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. If I were to point fingers, I'm pointing fingers at council. I think it is absolutely council's job to prioritize for the staff so they're not getting yanked around, they're not starting this, spending so many hours on this, you know, and, and doing that. So it, it has to come from council because I've never seen anything that council has asked staff to do. The staff has not jumped through themselves to try to make it happen. So council needs to get, I must say get their act together, but I'm going to say it, and prioritize things and follow that. Now if something comes up during whatever's going on, we have to switch, change gears, then, then so be it. But we can't have staff work on 12 different things and whoever's the loudest or most adamant, that's what gets hopped on, something else comes off and then chastise staff, you know, I'd like to go from this to this. I just want to make sure you understand, my intent was, is, I believe it's council driven and I believe the issues that some of the issues that we're seeing with rework, going back and forth and all that is due to the council, not to the staff. We owe it to the staff to prioritize and, and give direction. You know, and then staff enough time to do due diligence. That way we can hold you accountable.
Yeah, now, can I say something else?
I'm done, yes, sir.
Because I'm following up with what you're saying. I also believe that when we come up as a council with an idea, that whether that's, for example, shade shelter, all right, that's something you really want to push and you're all over, okay. Then I think each member of council...
It's finished business.
Well, what I'm saying is let's each person of council, as we go through this, be assigned to one of these to help the staff work through whatever needs to be done. Going back to what you're saying, flow charts, getting back in my background, that's the way you documented every step of a process, was you had a flow chart that said, all right, was this, was a, was a, a quality bid received? What was included in the bid? How much did they agree to do? What are we assuming? Every one of those things needs to be done. So we don't get to the end and find out, well, you know, we thought it was including like all the concrete or something, but no, it was everything but the concrete. Well, no, that should have been in the process to me. And if it's one of these lights, we all understand that, all right, this low beam light, you know, we should have caught that when we were coming up to me, not at the end after we all agreed, all right, let's spend this money and do it and then find out in. Well, to me, if you've gone through a plan and a systematic checklist of what you're doing, those kind of things don't get missed. But again, I think it's, like you're saying, Tim, I think it's a responsibility of this council for each of us to take on some of these projects, work with the staff. Don't just tell the staff, y'all go out there and figure this out and come back up with what you want. To me, that's, that's not how you work. This is a team. And we as council people need to assume responsibilities and be part of that team, not tell Troy, Troy, go out here and pave all the roads and that. I mean, no, that, that doesn't make sense, okay? Or, or Georgina, you, you got to figure out all these lights and that's your deal. No, we need to help, come up with this plan and organize it. And then when we come back, we say, okay, look, this is the kind of light we really need and this is what it's going to cost and this is the pole we need and this is the concrete we need and, and this is what it's going to cost. Without getting, it's like we, I hate to say it, watching the other council, I'm going to be just as bad as they are, I'm sure. If not in a year, everybody's going to think I'm a nut. But it's kind of like they come up with an idea and they get part of the information and we agree to do it and then down the road we realize, wait a minute, we missed something. Well, to me, if you have an organized checklist of, did we do all these steps? We won't get to the end before we realize we should have never done this. Or this is not what it was going to cost, this is what it was going to cost. And that's what I like to say is kind of get the orders.
I thought it was done, but I have a question for the attorney, if I may.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? This isn't a one man or two man conversation. So I'd speak, I would like to say something, I haven't spoken out for 30 minutes.
What I'm hearing described, there's no one who can possibly say they disagree with that. There seems to be a blanket assumption that none of this is being done, none of it. That somehow this city is just running hodgepodge like a ship that's in a storm with every man for themselves. That could not be further from the truth. I can show you a list of accomplishments that have come out of this council of the last couple of years. And I think people would be blown away by what has been done with council work and staff. So to make these sweeping generalizations that there's some sort of total dysfunction. Chickens running around with their heads chopped off, no one knowing what's going on. Everybody just guessing, hoping it's right. That is not the reality of what's going on here. We have some blips, we know that. What governmental function doesn't? In fact, I would hold up to what we do as, as something a lot of governments would like to be as good at, what we do. If, if this council is going to take a position that every individual idea has to be micromanaged by council, you're in essence taking staff's ability from what they do in the 30 days in between meetings. Not one of us has the authority to individually go in and tell staff what to do. We don't have the authority, I don't have the authority to tell staff what to do. The only thing we can do is as a body of council to do that. And if you think meeting once a month for three hours, we're going to be able to micromanage all the little details that they have to do on their own, it's just not going to work. Rather than making clarity to council, clarity to staff where they know what to do, you're going to create confusion and indecision because they're not going to know what to do. They're going to feel unsure about their decision because they're not quite sure what council wants them to do. And they can't call individual ones and get a consensus, it doesn't work that way. For instance, on budget for improvements of beautification, plants and whatever, just go there. Council makes a decision to put X amount of money into that. We're going to put $10,000 into the beautification of routes with plants, native plants and whatever. Basically, what you do, that is assigned to Mandy and Mandy assigns that to her department heads to figure out the best way to do that. They don't come back to us and say, how many varieties do you want in the middle of this intersection? Do you want to have two trees or do you want to have one tree there? So I, I really don't know where you're going with this. I really think that when this meeting concludes, staff is going to be more confused than ever. If I was on staff right now listening to this meeting, I wouldn't know what to do for the next 30 days. You basically have said we ought to hold back on all the projects we're currently involved with until we get clarity.
Well, which ones are going on, Bill?
Yeah.
The shade shelters are not.
There's, there's a lot of things going on. The shade shelters are supposed to start the first week of January.
Before concrete, that's it.
That's correct. Well, that's the first one.
And we've got, we have a guy who won't sign a contract. That's stupid.
You don't know the details of that?
Well, I know you, who you're talking about and I'm concerned.
Well, the details are...
And that's going to wreck.
I, I think we're getting a lot of...
Wait a second, here's the details. He has said, he is a licensed contractor, fully licensed, fully insured. He's a builder within the city, possibly one of the most busy builders we have in the city right now. He has on his own come to the city and said, if you supply the materials, I'll build it for you.
And you assume all responsibility?
There are, I'm sure there are ways to, to deal with that.
Oh, is there a way to do that if you don't have a contract?
Typically, we'd get a contract, but I, I will tell you this and you all need to know this as you're talking about this today. This is the first thing I'm hearing about shade pavilions because that's not what I do for the city. However, I have heard Andrew talk briefly about it, about the issues with the prior contractor. I know he's very involved in it. So my apologies to each of you that I don't have the details to tell you. This is what you need to do with that particular issue. But it is something that I think is being worked on, both on the legal side and with staff.
May I ask a question of the attorney? We're hearing Bill say it's finished business, okay? I understand what he's saying. What my question is, is this council not allowed to make changes or cancel by motion and vote past approved projects?
It, it depends on what it is and it needs to be specific. So for example, let's say you have a public improvement project. You put it out for bid, you got your bids, you decided on it, you signed a contract. Yeah, you can, you can vote to revoke it and you're going to get sued for each contract.
No, I'm talking about items where we have no contracts in place, etc.
Right. If it, if it's some general item, something's been approved, you wanted to revisit it, it's in progress. The facts of each one of those is very important about what my legal advice would be about your remedy. But generally, can you choose to go in a different direction than has previously been authorized on some matter, generally? Yes, you could. Whether you should or not, either from a policy standpoint, which I can't answer for you, or from a legal standpoint is a different question. I, I would just like the specific details of specifically what it is or I could give you a direct answer on that.
I mean, to the point, Mr. Inslee, Inslee, the power of three votes is phenomenal. I talked with you about that.
I understand.
When you were...
Right, I understand. I just wanted to hear from the attorney.
You can do or undo basically whatever you want with three votes. You can go right now and make motions on many of these things, right here, right now. Get a second with discussion. If you get three votes, you can kill whatever you want to kill.
Right, and that's...
Right?
Yeah, I got confused with the finished business stuff and that's why I wanted the attorney clarification and his cautions, you know, what to do so we don't get the city...
So all I'm saying for someone who has been on this council for four years and has been mayor for two, if this council totally disagrees with many of the things that are in play and wants to kill, I look at that as a vote of lack of support for what I've done and what I'm doing.
Well, I mean, things...
I mean, that's the way I perceive it. That's the way I perceive it.
Okay, well, I think your perception is too personal. I mean, let's use the light project. We've gone from $26,000 to $75,000. No fault of anybody, just done the research. The, I brought up the electrical expense, we didn't have an answer there. Now we have an, an answer, it's $700 per, somewhere around $700 per property. Or we're going to send a letter out to all the property owners, which is so tangled, it's, I don't, can't even understand it, to hire a contractor and do that. So now it's getting so muddied up, the pricing is that, that I'm of the opinion we should, you know, make a motion and we've seen enough and cancel that project so we don't have staff spending more time on that when, you know, if this present council doesn't agree with it. The trees for Ernie Mills Park, I think it's a great idea, but I'm going to be adamant about budget discipline. If it's not in this year's budget, it's a great idea. Give something like the trees to the beautification committee. Let them get all the details, present the details to the council. And if council approves it, then it goes into next year's budget. Because I've got a real problem with the inks not even dry on this budget yet and we've already made just approved $47,000 in expenditures. I think to grant this is a great idea, okay? But I would not have approved it myself because I think it should go into next year's budget. I think there should be better budget discipline than what is going on in my opinion. So I'm going to go back to once more, we were going to touch on these and I think a few of them we need to make motions on tonight. If we're, and we're allowed to make motions, it sounds like. And I don't think they should be taken personal. And I'm watching the audience and she...
You're going contrary to what you said. If you, if you make motions on these things, you are in essence not alerting council to what's upcoming. No one expects a motion tonight on this. So if you're going to take a position that has been taken, you want everything out there and put ahead of time where everybody knows it's coming so you can be prepared and vote. If you take motions on this, this is contrary to what has been said by this council, that you want to make sure it's done in the future and it's, and council has a chance to think about it and discuss it.
I, I support that. I agree with that. For example, if we were to revisit shade shelters, I would want time between now and the next meeting to understand if the current identified contractor could go through all of the steps required by the city. Because if he could become a contractor for the city of Dunellen like every other contractor and check our boxes, then perhaps that would be a yes vote for me. So I see what you're saying, that indeed we would need some time... So I see what you're saying, that indeed we would need some time to work through this.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add just briefly about the details of these specific things, just pick one out. If there are contracts in place that would be being canceled, as your legal counsel, I would advise you to at least give us the opportunity to look at that and tell you what your legal ramifications would be before you...
Agree and understand.
...make the motion in a public meeting to potentially breach a contract. That's all.
I agree.
Totally agree. And I want to say something. My understanding is there's not a contract on shade shelters, not a contract to get on the way signs, there's not a contract on solar lighting, and not a contract on electricity.
Correct. I want to be on, I have no idea.
I'm about to say something else. It's not 30 days to our next meeting, okay? We have a workshop, it's like the first week in January, right?
Third of January.
Yep. So to me, all of this needs to be on that, that agenda. But the concern I have is the guys about to pour concrete for some shade shelters, we not even want to do since we don't have a contract. And I'm just going to be adamant, until we get a signed contract, we not going forward.
So do we need to make a motion?
Wait a second. By smear, you're out of order. You cannot dictate what we go forward on or what we don't. It's not your...
Well, if I make a motion right now, then...
But it's not your call to say what we're going to do.
I make a motion that we stop the shade shelters. Do I get a second?
I second that.
Any discussion?
I go back to saying that in order to make a decision on the shade shelters, I would want to know if the contractor can follow the steps of the city. So I, I would want to have that information prior to making a decision on the shade shelters.
Right, but the concern is, is, okay, when we say stop, let's, maybe a better word would be pause. We don't want, I don't want somebody going out there doing work without a contract. So pause might be a better word than stop. Until we get, put it on the workshop, and then ferret all this out where we stand in January, and then move forward from there.
If there's potential liability to the city because there's a contractor going out to do it that's not, that doesn't check our boxes, I agree, that's concerning.
If the, the, if the movement, Mr. Dunn, if you would want to amend your motion to say pause instead of stop, we can entertain that. Otherwise, I would recommend that if you do want, if it's the will of the body to change it to pause, just because it's important, you would, the appropriate move, if you're not going to amend the motion, is, would be to deny it and then re-move for it for the word pause. Is there a legal difference between the words stop and pause? I understand the intent is different.
Okay. I want to amend my motion to say pause, and when I say pause, that means no pouring concrete until we get an answer. Which when we get an answer with that, we can unpause.
And then be a second to that.
Because what I've been told is they're going to pour concrete the first week in January.
I understand.
I second that motion.
Okay, and then there would need to be a vote on the amendment. You're only voting on the amendment to amend the original motion. Then you would bring it back, the original motion, for further discussion or vote.
Any discussion?
That's for me to ask. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Bring it to a vote. Those in favor...
Will you offer that public comment for you?
Public comment?
For you.
Yes, I guess so.
Vote.
Public comment. Yes, stun.
Kathy Dunn, 11386, Cedric Strawn. In my opinion, I've heard many times from our council that we can pause or stop any project that we feel is not addressing the big needs of the city. And my point of view is, that is not, the shade shelters are not one of the big needs of the city. Things like code enforcement is, we are working on it now. And I think when we nickel and dime ourselves on little projects like ropes, lights, shade shelters, this is a thing that takes the staff's time and we end up not doing anything on it. To me, it's better to address the big picture things like homes going forward. And I think that's what our new council members are trying to say. Let's stop and take a breath and reprioritize, get our comprehensive plan, our CRA plan, things like that that have not been done and are not even in compliance with the law, that we need to do that before we start going around putting, building little projects that take time and take the distraction away from the big things that we need to do to reorganize the city and cost money. Every time, every minute we sit in this meeting is costing us money. And that's why we need to stop and take a breath and put these things on the back burner, not to say that we can't ever do them, but why don't we look at the big things that are wrong with this town? We've got a city council, city hall right now that needs to be painted, the water fountains off the wall, we've got things that are broken around here. Why don't we fix that before we go out and build a new stuff? That's my opinion. Thanks for hearing me.
Is there any other public comment? Ms. Odom, is there anybody on Zoom?
No, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Discussion? The motion and the second on the floor is to put the shade shelter project on pause until further notice. A vote of yes means put it on pause, a vote of no means to not put it on pause. So all in favor? Signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? No. Motion carries four to one.
I'd like to make another motion.
Please.
I would like to pause anything done on the historic way signs, the solar lighting, trees on Ernie Mills Park until we have more time to go back and look at each one of these things and get a good list of what we need. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have a public discussion, Ms. Odom?
Oh, God.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom? Hey, discussion?
Yeah, starting with discussion, I think we should separate the way signing signs from the solar light project. Those are two huge projects that really aren't even related to each other, other than they're in the historic district. And the problem is that now the feasibility, the funding is, is not even feasibility as a public, and of course, this is my opinion, but I think the price jump from 26,000 to 76,000 is huge. We just need to put a big pause on that project. And when I said get a consult, I meant that we could go to another city, somewhere sized us, I'm thinking High Springs or the one I love, Palatka, what they have done with their streets, and talk to them, how much did they, how did they work that out? Okay? I just think we, we just need to put that on the back burner, hit the big pause button on the lights. But the way finding signs is a much simpler thing. Okay, we know what the signs are going to look like. Georgina, we do know, I believe, the exact price for those signs. That's not going to be changed in the future.
No.
So I think we need to separate those two, and I'd like to make a motion that we put the solar powered street lighting project on pause.
Ms. Scovitch, you would have to ask Councilman Dunn to amend his motion if he's...
Could you please amend the motion?
His motion is on the floor.
Can we finish discussion before he amends, or will he amend?
Discuss whatever you want.
Okay. I would also like to add the Main Street program to the pause.
Thank you.
Until we have a chance to discuss it.
Okay. I'd like to amend my pause to not include the way signs, but to include the Main Street project. So my corrected pause would be to pause the solar lighting, the trees on Ernie Mills Park, and the Main Street project. Do I have a second?
You got a second.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Odom, give me some advice. Now that we have made an amendment, does that require public, another public? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to the amended motion? Is there anyone on Zoom?
No, sir.
Any discussion on the amended motion? No discussion, we bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Aye. Passes four to one. Okay, what else?
I'd like to make a motion. I would still like to put on pause the wayfinding signs until further discussion from a workshop.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this motion? Ms. Odom, anybody on Zoom?
Yes, sir.
Any council discussion? No discussion, we'll bring it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How are you voting?
No.
I vote no. Passes three to two. Have you voted yes on everything since, except for this? I haven't, I can't see you too often because...
I'm sorry.
How have you, have you voted with the majority on, have you voted with yes on...
On the previous motion, yes.
So this is the first time you have voted no?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we got that correct. Ms. Odom, I request that you quit down in name how the votes are for the record so we know who voted which way.
That is how we do the math.
Okay, very good. All right, next.
Can I make a motion about something? In the past, we have always had our workshop, I believe on a Wednesday, and then we have a council meeting after those workshops the following Monday. And personally, and again, I'm just now on this council, so I'm not totally familiar with how things go, but I can imagine how they go, in that sometimes we have a council meeting on a Wednesday, and the staff works a four day work week, and that means they work on Thursday, and the council meeting is the next Monday. That does not give our staff a whole lot of time to get their work done and get it prepared for the council. And I don't know what procedures or how long it would take to get the public notified, but I would recommend having those meetings further apart.
Molly, I'm sorry, Councilman. I was going to speak to that. I had to reach out to Attorney Hand to see if there was a conflict in what I was going to propose. And he's confirmed with me that there's not, that he would be available for the recommendation. And it would, if approved by council, and y'all let me know when you want me to speak to it, would just require a passage of a resolution.
Okay, well, I didn't want to go that far. I was really just going to discuss what the other members of the council thought of this update, and then if we all agree. But my point is, when we have council workshops on a Wednesday, and they work Thursday, and they're off till Monday, and we have a council meeting on Monday, that doesn't give our staff a whole lot of time to get things done and organized for the meeting. Especially, and what my concern was, that I wouldn't get the information to review and read and study in a timely manner to be able to really do what I was supposed to do as a member of this council. So my suggestion to this council is we move these meetings further apart. One suggestion would be to have the workshop on the first Monday, not the first Wednesday, and then possibly move the council meeting to the next Monday, or that wouldn't really move it, or to the next Wednesday, to give all of us on the council adequate time to review this information. Because my point is, in sitting in the audience sometimes, I will get these agenda items and I'll start reading them, and there won't be a lot of attachments to them, and the attachments come the last day. And now that I'm on this council, I would rather have those attachments a couple of days ahead of time so I can read and understand what we're about to do. So that's my thought, and I wanted to have a discussion about that tonight and what everybody else might think.
Okay, let me comment to that. What you're proposing is a new idea, correct? We didn't know this new idea was coming tonight, right?
Well, I did.
Right, you meant it was a new idea, right? And you've given details about what you think the new idea is, right?
Kind of like your trivia last week.
Right, but you have already said that you think that was the way we should do this, what you're doing, okay? Just want to point that out to you.
Okay. Since this meeting went off the rails, it doesn't matter.
No, you are doing right now what you said we should not do.
Okay, I agree. But since our next meeting is next Wednesday, I think we need to change this.
My statement of meetings being 30 days tween is a generalized statement how we usually do it. Because of the special meeting tonight, I realized we are having our regular meeting, but normally, to my point, there's a 30 day gap between the time, 25 to 30 day gap between the time we meet as a unified council to make decisions. Where are we at?
My discussion would be, let's put that on a workshop so that we can ferret everything out. And the first thing about, I think about our first Monday is, there's so many holidays on a Monday, and I'd just like the time and discussion to ferret out the issues with changing meetings. The other thing is, it's no surprise in here to anybody that we're looking at requesting a five day work week, so that it may, may or may not change that particular thought. That's all I have.
Is there anything else on agenda item number six that council wants to discuss?
Yeah, I think we're supposed to be touching base on all these city budget. I guess I've lost track of what we're really doing here now. I thought we were here to prioritize, give a little bit of background for each item, and prioritize these items for future workshops. So the one that's not been covered right now that I see is up, is city budget and expenditures. The, you know, I, myself, I have questions, I have suggestions about the budget, and would like to carry those over into a workshop and discuss each one of those. And I can send out, based on Mandy's guidance, I can send out whatever guidance attachments would be applicable for that. Because I started out with a bunch of subbullets. It was too busy for an agenda. I mean, it would not be appropriate for this particular meeting.
Can I make a suggestion on that?
Yes, ma'am.
I just think that as we go forward, it's important, like, we all just got here and we're trying to figure out how to learn to work together and work with the staff. And we do have four years of the seats, so I would just ask that we pace things and that we, you know, that we're careful not to load an agenda heavy, especially on one item, but that we do spread things out and use the months and years that we have to pace ourselves. That's my only request.
Right, and I agree, and I thought that's what we were here for. I thought that that's what this particular point of the meeting was. So we gather up budget, we gather up everything else, anything that you wanted to add... So we gather up budget, we gather up everything else, anything that you wanted to add to the list you mentioned earlier, prioritize those, and then...
Do you see us prioritizing these in the next six months, year? What's your vision?
No, I see priority, I thought we were going to prioritize tonight, but looking at the time, maybe we should just agree to a list, and then in the next workshop, prioritize that list with the subbullets, and so that we can spread it out exactly what you recommended.
Any other comments?
I just have a question. I have something clarified. Are we going to put on the agenda for January's workshop that there will be discussion about the meeting dates, the meeting workshop dates? Is that what we have on the agenda, discussion of the?
I did make a note to discuss that at the other day during our talk.
Okay. And I agree with Mayor White, there is a way to bring up issues without going into details, and maybe we should just back up a little bit and consider that everybody here, sitting here, has an opinion, all of them valid, but that's why we have discussions at workshops. They should not be brought on board at a special meeting or a meeting like this.
May I, just for clarification, Council, so far, we have on January workshop from this list, shade pavilions, trees for Ernie Mills Park, and council meeting schedule. We are not going to discuss further at this time, weighfinding, lighting fixtures, or the Main Street program. That's, we're going to put that on the back burner for now and not bring that forth yet again in January, correct? Is that...
Sounds correct to me. Okay, before we leave, agenda item number six, is there anything else?
Well, we have a completed agenda item number six. Uh, for the workshop, again, the whole idea is to prioritize this, so the staff knows what direction to go, and we know what direction we're going. City budget and expenditures, I would like to add it to the workshop, and I'll send it back up for that. Administrative procedures.
And, and Councilman, let me just make a suggestion to, one of the reasons I discouraged the placement of the list that you gave me as backup to the agenda, as you were expressing your, your opinions and your thoughts and...
Right, so leave those out.
So, just if you have backup that you want me to add to the agenda, keep it factual and don't express your thoughts and opinions, or that could be a conflict.
Yes, I'm with you.
Well, it's, sending it to you is not a conflict for Sunshine.
Right.
Sending it around beforehand to everybody else, which will happen with the pack, it could create a...
You're sharing it out.
Yeah, no measure. Thank you for the guidance.
Yeah.
So, so we have city budget expenditures, you got that one, Manny?
I got it.
Admin procedures, law enforcement activity, and we added a new one, residential speed limits, city code and comprehensive plan, road projects, and sewer projects.
Sewer? Sewer project?
Yeah, storm, storm drainage, I'm sorry.
Stormwater.
Yes, stormwater. Oh, thank you. And that completes my list, unless, you know, and then again, I thought that we were, tonight, it's not going to happen, and I thought we were going to go through, touch base on all those, what the background is and what we're looking at doing with each one of those topics, and then prioritize them.
My question with what you proposed, and I agree that they're all important, is what keeps the next meeting then from looking like this one? So if we have the list of things that you just listed to put on the agenda, I guess my concern is that, like, tonight, we, none of us really knew what to expect, and we're all trying to find our way. I just fear that if those things are piled on the next agenda, that we're going to land in the same spot that we are today.
I don't know how we prioritize, we prioritize things without creating a list. You know, I think we're just going to have to have the discipline to not try to negotiate the items. The idea is to prioritize them. Here's the information, here's the background, put a priority on it, and move forward. We won't get into the debates like, you know, we should not get into the debates like we did tonight. And I don't know how we prioritize things without a list.
Can I add something?
Absolutely.
Some items, we're going to be approaching budget season very quickly, so that may kind of help direct you, if any of these items have budgetary impacts. Even projects, including the road projects. So it's not just your city budget and expenditure line item.
Right.
But even the road project or the shade shelters.
Yeah.
You know, things like that.
Right.
So just, just a thought.
No, and I agree, and I've already thought that out, you know, and I got stuff sitting on the back burner waiting for that process to be, and those are not items that I plan on bringing up.
Because I'm really hoping we can start on the budget a lot sooner.
Yes, ma'am.
Than we have in years past, because I think we need some more meetings to discuss if, if your direction is going to be to really direct staff with projects rather than us prepare the budgets and say, here's our thoughts. It just depends on how you'd like to handle that. Just a thought.
No, don't worry.
Anything else on agenda item number six?
Talk to me.
All right, let's move on to council comments. Is there anything on agenda item number seven, council comments?
I'd just like to say that this has been a very good meeting. I mean, we know you were, you all were campaigning what your priorities were, I mean, you were already listing your priorities. Okay, so what happened tonight was not a surprise at all. I think this council is going to work together, it's going to come together. Everybody thinks their ideas are the best, including me, I'm totally guilty of that. Okay, but I think things are going to work out, just putting on the brakes on a few projects, and there's 12 months in the year. So I, I think this was a very good meeting.
Ms. Mendelka?
I would like to just say thank you to the, I extended an invitation to department heads to meet with me to talk about some of these things, because I did feel for myself that it was important to see where they were coming from, so I just want to acknowledge the people who took some time to meet with me this week, and, and know that that helps me with this priority business going forward. I also think it was a good meeting. I think that we're going to encounter growing pains with each other. I think that there's going to be bumps in the road, but who knows, maybe six months from now, we'll be moving along a lot smoother, and we'll, we'll just get a feel. I think in the past, councils have been mixed groups of people. On the last council before the three of us got here, I know for a fact that the mayor and you as well, Jan, took on a lot of projects and worked closely on a lot of projects and made a lot of things happen. And I anticipate that will continue to happen, but I know now that we, I really believe that we have five council members who are really invested in doing their homework and bringing ideas, maybe in a way that the city hasn't seen in the past. So let's all give each other a chance and listen to one another and communicate and try to stay on the same page with hearing what our staff has to say, so that we can move forward and continue to do great things. Thank you.
I would like to ask the, the staff, it would, the department heads, get with their employees and themselves, give us a list, well, without any names, of what, where you guys think that you're getting yanked around, okay? Nobody knows your business better than you all, and things that are happening in your world that make you inefficient, that can be resolved, give us that list, and we will work on that list.
Shorter meeting.
Pardon me?
Shorter meeting.
I'm, I'm going to get there, Manny. Right, there's going to be, yeah, it's going to be a painful curve for a while, we're going to get there. And that's what a lot of this is going to be about. We'll get some structure in here, the frustration you all feel, the head shaking I'm seeing, we'd like to cure all that, you know, the best, the best that we can. But can't do that without, you guys have the knowledge, you know, we sit here and think we know what to do. With the best bang for the buck is going to be getting you guys' list. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
I appreciate everybody's time, and I like short meetings too, and I'm sorry this one went on so long. My only comment going forward is, we do have two meetings scheduled in January. I think some of this is going to take more than one meeting in January, so we might want to consider adding an additional special meeting, and that's all.
We'll see how it goes in January, and we can always do that. I have no comment. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.